Mr. French, would you lead the pledge?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Minutes from April 5th and April 12th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? And then we'll accept the minutes as submitted. Okay. I would like to mention that at the copies of the agenda up front and at the bottom of the agenda is a statement about comments that are appropriate for public comment at the Board of Education meeting. And what it says is that there should be concerning subjects that lie within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education. And that might seem a little ambiguous to people. So this is a policymaking board. It's a legislative body, not an executive body. So issues that relate to the implementation of policy belong to the superintendent and the school administrations. Questions about the policies themselves, or whether their policies are adequate, or about the budget, or other concerns of the Board of Education are appropriate for discussion. So the first person on my list is Mr. Bill Stover.
I don't know, when you saw my name, you didn't immediately think of, this is going to be an obstruction or something?
No.
Yes.
I just thought I'd clarify. Good evening. Is that on? I'm only here tonight, actually, I'm here unofficially on behalf of over 400 K through 12 students that we have in our system, over 320 parents, over 50, 60 employees in the before and after school programs, and you know, groups like Yukon's Community Outreach, Eastern Connecticut's Center for Community Engagement, Royal Wyndham, Big Brothers Big Sisters, a lot of different providers and collaborators, to thank the Board of Education for including funding for the before and after school programs in your budget. That, as you know, we've never asked for funding. I just assumed we would never get any from the local budget because the funding is so bad. We do, we are still in a crisis in terms of after school programming. The only program that's for certain in the fall is the Middle School Puente's Program because they have two more years of federal funding. We are waiting for an RFP for the 21st Century Community Learning Centers grant, and also the possibility for an RFP for the state grant. If those are approved, they do come through, then we should be in good shape for the fall. But we don't know about any of that yet. You know, the one depends on what's happening at the national level, and the other depends on what happens at the state level. But regardless of all that, we, the whole Before and After School America wants to thank the Board of Education because it was really a wonderful gesture that you did in putting in, I think it was like $81,000 in the budget. That would definitely help. As I mentioned at the Board of Finance the other night, just in parent fees that we collect during one school year from our after, before and after school sites, we collect nearly $120,000 from our parents. That's on a sliding fee scale, so each of them pays depending on what their income is. So we really do have incredible buy-in from the community for the after school programs. We have waiting lists of over 140 total students that I know of at this point. So there is a great need for the before and after school programs, and we will continue looking to get those funds so that we can start the program up in the fall. But I did want to thank the Board of Education.
Thank you, sir. And I'd like to thank the Board of Finance for indicating last week that should there be a shortfall in either the federal or state grants that we have relied upon in the past, that they will be amenable to an application to get funding from the town's uncommitted fund balance. So you know, we do want the after school programs to continue and to grow because they are important. Ms. Barbara Popaleski, did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, you did, actually.
Thank you.
It's rare.
You need to come to the table.
And since we have a talent as an audience, it's important to use the microphone so they can hear you.
I'm here on behalf of Jocelyn and Israel Torres, but at this point, I've decided not to speak. Possibly in the future, I will on their behalf.
Okay.
In case you don't know me, I am local.
Thank you.
I taught at Nat-Jo for 32 years.
What grade?
I grew up here, 4th grade. I taught 4th, 5th, 6th, and I've taught in the old today. So, and I live in town. Take care.
Thank you, ma'am. Israel Torres?
At this time, I choose not to speak. Thank you.
Okay. And Jocelyn Scuster Torres?
At this time, I would like not to speak because I need more information about, and information that I could receive today.
Okay.
About, um...
STEM school.
Yeah, about the STEM school lottery. And I have been talking already to Dr. Garcia about it, but I have more information that needs to be revised.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so that's all that we have on the list of signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Mr. French?
I guess I want to discuss where you started off tonight. For one thing, everybody uses the buzzword transparency. Well, that's one thing that this Board of Education in the last year and a half hasn't had. You know, you're not allowing people to come forward to speak to us, you're saying because it's not a policy issue. Well, how do you know if a policy is needed? If a policy is working, or if a policy needs adjustment? Well, you're not going to know unless you let the people of Wyndham talk. And the worst thing I've ever seen here is the gavel coming down and saying to this poor young mother that she wasn't able to continue on. At that point, we had, between myself and you, we had a little discussion, and you yelled, pointing at me, said, "Well, you voted for this." Well, I checked the minutes. It's a year ago tomorrow. I wasn't here that night. So I hope that you get your facts straight next time. And I really do think I need an apology for you doing what you did. But I think that the people of Wyndham deserve better than they're getting. This is not how a board should behave. For nine years, I cheered the Finance Board, and I would never, ever shut somebody down. It's just not right to do. It's un-American, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. French. Is that anyone else? Okay, we have a presentation.
Correct.
On the, I forget what DMG stands for.
Yes, DMG, the District Migrant Group. Yes.
Yes, please do.
And good afternoon to all. And I do want to say, Mr. Chairman, if I may take a couple minutes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, if I may, I just want to say to Mrs. and Mr. Torres, I will give you a phone call tomorrow. If you're willing to come and speak to me in my office, I'd be happy to see you and go over the information that you received today. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
As you know, a couple weeks ago, we did a presentation with, at that time, with DMC, not DMG, though they changed. And the DMG is a group that is well-known across the country. They are from Boston, Massachusetts, and they're known across the country in really helping school districts, and they have done a tremendous job helping school districts to look at their system, put in place, to really improve operation and to improve instruction in the district. We were lucky to get, we applied for some funds for this particular initiative, and we were able to get the funds to do that. And they came in and did, I don't want to call it an audit, or an assessment, but basically a study in two areas that we had concerned. The area of how are we supporting struggling students, and what is the structure and design of our coaching model? She did, the result came in, and she did a presentation to all the administrators, and she's here tonight to present a brief finding to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. It's good to be back again. I was here, I think, in the fall and talked about the work that we planned to do, and now I'm here to give you an update on where we are with the process, and what we found, and what some of the next steps are going forward. So as the title of the presentation indicates, and Dr. Garcia just said, we really looked at two main areas. One was how the district is currently serving struggling students, those students who are not necessarily meeting grade level expectations. And we also looked, took a very careful look at the coaching program. And as you well know, the district invests quite a bit of resources in coaching, which we believe is a really wise decision, but we're, we wanted to help the district make the most powerful use of those coaches as possible. So I'm just going to talk for about 10 or 15 minutes, and then just I'll answer any question you have when I'm done. But what I want to cover is the project goals, and an overview, and some preliminary highlights, and then what's going to happen next, and then I'll stop and see what questions you might have. And as I said, this is an update on our progress, and I really appreciate the opportunity to come and share our findings thus far, and the kinds of things that we hope to do going forward. So we, our work here in Wyndham has, as I said, two components. We're talking, looking at how the district serves its struggling students, and those are students who, excuse me, are identified as having disabilities, but they're also students who are not identified as special education, but still are struggling within the classroom to achieve and to be able to do work, grade level work. The way we approached this was to do an in-depth study, one, we call it our diagnostic. It included lots of focus groups, interviews, and then something we call schedule sharing. I'd say in our interviews and focus groups, we probably talked to about 200 different individuals, and we sampled people from across the district so that we knew we were talking to all kinds of service providers, anybody who kind of touches these students who are struggling. And also in terms of the coaching, we really did an in-depth discussion with the people who are doing the work here in the district. We also did something that's called schedule sharing, where we had people report to us on a, for a full week at a certain period of time, a certain period during the year, tell us what you're doing on fairly small time increments. So it might have been like for every half hour, tell us, you know, which students you served, what you were doing when you saw them, how many students were you serving at one time. So we got a really detailed picture of what everybody was doing with the struggling students. Out of this, we were able to identify the strengths that the district has, and also some opportunities for improvement. It's always important, I think, to build off of the district's strengths, and so we were very careful to note those. But we also wanted to find ways that the district could use its resources more effectively to reach more students. The next step in that stream of work is to help the district create a vision for success and move forward with implementation of these opportunities. And as I think I said this when I was here the last time, it's never our intent to create a report and then leave it with the district and hope that things work out, because a report never does anybody any good unless it's acted upon. So we're really intent on helping the district plan for implementation. Our second body of work was looking at coaches. The district invests currently a significant amount of its resources in coaching, which, by the way, is the most effective way to develop teachers. If you had to choose some way to spend your resources on helping teachers learn to do their job with some very difficult students, then you would pick coaching. So what we did was, we tried to figure out whether or not the district was using its coaches in the most effective way possible. And we did that, first of all, by conducting schedule sharing, so that we found out how coaches are spending their time in some very detailed way. We provided the initial diagnostic analysis to the coaches, and then really were able to get more information that way. And our goal is to provide, to create some systems and structures so that the coaches will be using their talents in the most effective way possible, and then to help the district monitor over time so that those new ways of doing their work will stay in place. So two distinct bodies of work, obviously very related, because struggling students struggle because, in many ways, because the skills of the teachers need to be refreshed, and coaches are there to help teachers refresh their skills. So these are two important levers for the district to improve student performance. And I'm going to talk next about where we are. I'm just going to check, make sure I'm on the right slide. This is our project overview, and I'm going to sort of locate us and show you where we are, what we've done, where we are, and what's left to be done. So we conducted the diagnostic in the two different areas since last fall, and now into the early spring. That was establishing goals with what's called the Guiding Coalition. It's like a steering committee that exists of multiple stakeholders in the district. So we try to get as many different people in the room to work with, so to make sure that whatever we do makes sense for the district. So, you know, in my, the way I put it is that, you know, when you look at a problem through multiple lenses, and particularly using the people who are doing the work in the district, you can better understand what the challenges are, where the strengths are. And so our Guiding Coalition is composed of individuals from across the district in many, many different roles. We shared our research and best practice, and then we provided diagnostic highlights and preliminary areas of opportunity. So that's in the far-left column. Now that our diagnostic is done, we're ready to, what we call align on initial opportunities. And in fact, we have done that. We have the areas that the district wants to focus on. And we're going to take those priorities and start to really flesh them out and see like, so if it's a priority to strengthen the multi-tiered system of support, exactly what does that mean? So the next step is to define a vision for success for the areas that are chosen, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Once this current focus is done, and we hope to have this third column of implementation planning done for the start of the next school year, so that the district can actually start to act on some of these things, and begin to get some things in place that will support the struggling students. And then number 10, ongoing, is the phase where you're looking at using some of the practices with some of the students, improving things that aren't working exactly as they're supposed to, and continued refinement of the plan. But as this process unfolds, the district should have much stronger systems and strategies for supporting students, both in the general classroom, but also as they receive intervention, and also a stronger coaching program. And those are two of the outcomes that the district is after. So just a high-level view of what we did with the diagnostic, we have qualitative evidence. And you can see that we started with interviews with district leaders, and we did focus groups with all of those groups that are listed there. So we talked to people to find out what's going well, what are your challenges, what would help you to do your work better. So we really gained a very in-depth understanding of how people do their work, but also what things are getting in their way. And so we understand now, especially in the area of struggling students, how to help them move forward. We did classroom observations, because we think it's really important to see students doing their work where they, where they learn, so we spent some time in classrooms. And we also did some data analysis, and I won't read all the areas, but we did some national benchmarking for the district, and we, as I said, we looked at staff schedules. We analyzed 23 different roles in the district in terms of the schedules. And we tried to address three key issues. What percentage of service to struggling students is push-in versus pull-out? Like to really gain an understanding of what's currently happening in the district in terms of, do you pull kids out to serve them? Do you push in? Where do they get their help? How much time by each practitioner is spent actually working with students? What we find in districts all over the country is that, you know, the district starts out with the intention that the majority of time will be spent serving students, and over time, things get put into the schedule, like meetings, or lots of reports, or things that kind of take away from that time with students. And so we, we actually looked at how much of a practitioner's time is spent with students. When they're with students, what are they working on? And also, how many students are supported at a single time? You know, in some cases, you'll see every practitioner working one-on-one, and another practitioner who has the same job might be working with a small group of students. And we kind of wonder why that difference happens.
I would like to know, with that observation that you have of many, many teachers, what would be the strong or the weakest point that you see in the system?
Okay, so I'm going to actually, a few, I have a couple more slides, and I'm going to get to what we saw as the strengths of the district.
And the weak.
Okay. Just very shortly, I'll be there. Couple things that I just want to put out as cautions, to make sure you understand that we know, first of all, that every student is individual. So we're not trying to make judgments about what every single student needs. We know that serving struggling students is a matter of looking at who the child is, what their individual needs are. What we're trying to do instead is to give the district some ideas of systems that they can put in place to serve the majority of students. There will always be exceptions. So everything that I'm talking about should be seen in light of what, of the group of students, but the opportunity to personalize for individual students. And that's what IEPs are all about for special ed students, is making sure that their individual needs are being met. So we're not saying you should do one thing for all students. We're saying the majority of students could probably benefit from this practice, but some might not. We're also, I want to make sure that we're talking about students with mild to moderate disabilities, and we're not talking about the most significantly disabled students, or the students perhaps with, you know, a fairly significant diagnosis of autism. So there are students for whom what we're talking about is not the prescription, but there are lots of students for whom it is. We also have a number of opportunities here, and it's really important to note, if the district is going to do a good job at this, they can't do everything at once. They have to pick a couple of things to start with. Eventually, we hope to get to all of the opportunities, but to start with, you want to be able to do something well, and you want to be able to equip teachers to do the work as well as they can. And so it takes time and lots of attention, and to hurry to implementation isn't going to do the district any good. So we really strongly encourage, if there are five opportunities, you can't tackle all of them at once. So here we are to some of the strengths, the things that are going well. So first of all, we find that the district's staff are hardworking and committed, they're dedicated to doing what's best for students. There wasn't a single interview where we didn't find teachers who were eager to, they actually were eager to tell us what they do, but they were already eager to say, "What can you tell us that will help us do our job better?" There was this, you know, true, you could feel it in the room when we were talking to people, there's very strong desire to do, they want to do better by their students. They know that they, in some cases, might need extra support or new ideas, but they're really asking for help. The district recognizes coaching as an effective professional development for staff, and you've made significant investments. I have to say that I think the coaching investment in this district is about as strong as I've seen in any district that I've worked in, and I've worked in districts all over the country, dozens and dozens of districts. And the commitment to coaching here is very strong, and it's a very wise investment. And what we hope to do is make the coaches that you have be as effective as possible. And that's the focus. The district has made a commitment to supporting native Spanish-speaking students through varied programs, lots and lots of efforts to reach out to families, to reach out to students, to support students both academically, socially, emotionally. And it is very clear that this district cares a lot about its native Spanish-speaking students through all of the programs that we heard about. There's a lot of pride in this community for those things that you're doing for your native Spanish-speaking students. The district also offers a lot of in-house supports for students with significant disabilities. The programming is very particular, it's very specialized, and the district pays attention to student needs in a very deep way. There aren't, we did not see populations of students where the district is saying, "Oh, it's good enough." We saw significant resources, time, energy being put into serving students with significant disabilities. Those aren't necessarily the students that this project is about, but the district is working very, very hard to serve the students with significant disabilities. And the last one is that the district leaders are really striving for continuous improvement. This is, I was, this is, might be the third time that I have spoken with the district Guiding Coalition, or the group of principals. And every single time, my interactions with them, both in that setting and in the interviews, has been, you know, "We want to do better, please, let's get going." You know, they want to go faster than we, so we're having to step up a little bit and go faster, because the leadership in the district is so eager to do better. They think that the things that we're suggesting are the right things to do, and they want to get going, because they know that they've got students out there, that they want to serve better than they're serving now. So I don't know if that answers your question, but those are some of the strengths that we saw.
It was part of the question.
Okay.
My other one is, what weakness you see in the system? Because the strength is the strength, and you don't have to work so hard because it is strength. But we have to work the weakness, because that shows you what type of school, what type of program it is. What weakness did you see?
Yeah. So if, these are things that we call opportunities for consideration. Now, I want to put a context around this. We were here to look at how the district serves struggling students, special ed or not, with mild to moderate disabilities. So we had a particular focus on a fairly large group of students who have needs that are not being met in the regular classroom currently. We also have some recommendations around the coaching program. So these five things are things that we believe the district could improve on, and if the district works on these five things, then you will see a significant difference in student performance. So the first thing that we think the district could do better is to refine the coaching program structure to better support teachers in the classroom. What we found is that the job descriptions vary, that some coaches are serving students in one way, teachers in one way, and another coach in another. The amount of time they spend with students is different. Some coaches see more individual teachers, some see groups. It's not yet a coherent approach to coaching. And given the investment, I think if we can, you know, sort of tighten up, help with the district, really work on figuring out the best service model, and also working with the coaches, to define the best service model and make it consistent across the district. So it doesn't matter what school you're in, if you are a coach, you're going to be serving students in a fairly similar, I'm sorry, teachers, in a fairly similar way. So we think that this, the investment is there in coaching, and we want to help the district get the most improvement for teachers out of the investment that you've made. And we think that there's some room to grow there. Another area is to refine the district's approach and vision for multi-tiered system of supports. So there is a multi-tiered system of support, also known as SRBI, RTI, it's got a lot of different names. What it means is that there's a system of support for tier one, which is the classroom, tier two, which is some intervention, and so forth. It's tiers of support. The district has worked on this before. We did see room for growth in that system. So what we want to do is build off the good work that's already been done, but help refine that system. This is the system where the classroom teacher who needs help gets help, the students who have a sort of a mild problem can get help in the classroom, but also students who have more significant problems can get pulled out for extra help. And what we found is that it's not consistently done across the district. And so if, you know, it depends on which school you're in, what kind of help you get. And because you're a school system, you want that help to be consistent, no matter which school you're in. So that's another area, is refining the existing system of multi-tiered system of support, so that at every tier of intervention, students are getting what they need. The third area that we thought the district could work on is having extra... is having extra, consistent access to extra instructional time. Last time I was here, I talked about the research is very clear that students who are struggling need at least 30 minutes a day in the subject that they're struggling in. So, if they're struggling in reading, they should get their regular reading instruction with their teacher, but they should also get extra help, 30 minutes a day. In some cases in the district, that's happening, in other cases, it's not. And so, our goal is to help the district, again, have a consistent approach to this, what we would probably, I don't know if you call it tier two or tier three here, but if a student is falling behind, that they, every student who falls behind gets the extra help they need and they get it when they need it. And so, that's a pretty big project to make sure that the assessments are in place, to make sure the teachers know which students need help, that you can actually build the schedule so the time is there, that there are really qualified people to be in those intervention settings. That's the work of, the third opportunity. Ensure that interventions for students, number four, ensure that interventions for students with mild to moderate disabilities are provided by staff with deep content expertise. Not unlike most districts, we see some students who have really significant disabilities or problems or they're really struggling academically, don't always get help from the most skillful teachers. Sometimes they get help from a paraprofessional. Sometimes they get help from a teacher who isn't necessarily highly trained. If I have a reading problem and the person who's trying to help me doesn't have deep expertise in helping struggling readers, then I'm not gonna get the help that I need. So, one of the things we suggested to the district is that you could align the staff that you have, the really strong, let's keep with the reading example, make sure the really strong reading teachers are giving interventions to kids. And we think there's work, we know there's work to be done in that respect because some of the students who are struggling are getting help, but they're not getting it from the most skillful people. And this is not to say that there's anything wrong with the people giving the help. It's just a mismatch between their talents and what the student needs are. The last opportunity, number five, is developing a coordinated system of social, emotional and behavioral supports and by increasing counseling services to students and providing more strategies to teachers. Oftentimes, teachers come up, they find students with behavior issues, social-emotional problems. They don't always have the skills to deal with those problems in the classroom. So, getting help to those teachers, but also creating a really strong system of intervention so that the staff that you do have, and again, this came through with our schedule sharing, the time they're spending with students is, could be increased. And we think by helping them sort out what's getting in the way of spending as much time as you should be with students will be very helpful. And I want to just emphasize that for any of these opportunities, our goal would be to work with the people in the district who do this work. So, if it's social-emotional, then working with those practitioners. If it's, you know, reading interventions, working with those, working with the coaches. Because we truly believe that we can't come in from the outside and tell the district how to make this work. It has to be in collaboration with the people who work here. We have to understand what are the obstacles getting in their way from doing the best work they know how? How can we help them remove those obstacles? How can we pave the way so that they can be the best possible practitioners and reach the most, the largest number of students? So, just to wrap up quickly here. After sharing these preliminary findings, district leaders and principals indicated that they wanted to focus on the first two opportunities to start with. The first one being refining the coaching program, that very significant investment that you've made so that the coaches can better support classroom teachers and support as many as possible. And the second is to refine the vision and the implementation of the multi-tiered system of support so that every student's getting the help they need in the way that they need it. So, those are the two opportunities that the principals and the leadership team selected. The next step is to take this, this group of opportunities and this information to the guiding coalition, which is the representative group that we're working with, to see how they feel about that and whether or not they want to refine this in any way, but to get their input because they're the ones who are gonna help us move this along throughout our time with the district. So, lastly, you can see that we're gonna begin working with the guiding coalition and principals. We've already met with them. Now that we have these opportunities outlined, we're gonna begin to plan for implementation of these priorities. Dr. Garcia is gonna be working on developing the vision for what would it look like if it were all in place and we had it exactly the way we wanted it? And then, following that, we'll come back and start working with the district on the planning, the implementation plan and the action steps. And we really want to have some, something in place for the fall and we're kind of zeroing in on what we want that to be. But we want something to be different for students in the fall. And it might be a small change, it might be, you know, a middle-sized change. It depends on what we can get done, but we're ready for action. So, we've done all the diagnostic and we've, you know, weighed the opportunities and now we're ready to start working and get things done for students. So, I'm gonna stop there and see what questions.
Thank you, Diane.
Yep.
Is there any question? Mr. Chairman? Ms. Ullman?
Ms. Ullman, thank you. I don't recall from the fall, was this a K through 12 initiative?
Yes.
Was it K through 12?
Yes.
So, all the way through the high school, the changes that you see?
Yep.
Okay.
So, it's a systemic.
I'm sorry, the fall was a while ago.
No, it was.
We had a few presentations sent and I just wasn't sure the range. Did you focus on any one group in particular or did you focus on everything equally?
When we did interviews, when we collected data, when we collected information, it was across the district.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm curious about marginal budget implications. As you're undoubtedly aware, having been around here for a while, there's a lot of uncertainty about state funding. And I know there are some in the state that would like to give districts like ours more resources than we've been getting. But until the legislature actually does something, we may get more, we may get the same, we may get less. So, if we were to get, well, let's just say $100,000, how would that impact, you know, more or less? How would that impact what you're doing?
So, a couple of things. First of all, we never, we work really hard to never recommend anything to a district that actually is gonna cost them more money. Because we're, you know, I know that budgets are extremely tight here, but they're tight in a lot of places. And so, I, we don't assume that districts are getting any more resources. So, the plans that we put out are to work within the district resources that you currently have. And our goal is to have the district make the most effective use of the resources you have, rather than to say, "Well, you need more." Now, could a district use more? Of course, a district could use more. But our assumption is that we're gonna work with what you have. You may have your budget cut even further. If that happens, we will work with the district, we'll work with the resources that you have when that budget cut comes.
At some point or other, we have to decide where to get bang for our buck.
Yeah.
And what kinds of programs doing, at the margin, we have to choose whether to invest in this or that or the other thing. I mean, we're kind of committed to supporting after-school programs, young parents programs and some other things that, that might otherwise, you know, for the, for the, just looking at the state plans, those budgets are at risk. But I mean, it's part of our jobs to try and figure out. So, one of the things that we're gonna try and understand about this is, if we have more money, if we have less money, you know, where does this fit in in terms of what we need to do? So, that's what I'm trying to get an idea of. I understand you'll get the most out of what we're able to give you, but if we're able to give more, how much more can we get?
So, you know, there's one thing that I always think of when somebody asks me that question, which is, you know, where, where do you place your bets? Like, where are the resources gonna go? There is nothing more important than a high-quality teacher for every kid. And so, you've put your money into coaching. And I think that we can serve you best and you can get the most out of whatever effort you do here, first of all, by strengthening your classroom teachers. Because that's who the kids see every single day. And when they have a really strong teacher in front of them, they're gonna learn more. I think the second part of a highly qualified teacher is when you have struggling students, they need highly skilled people to serve them. And if the district doesn't have those right now, then we can help the district figure out how to train more people so they can be more skilled to deliver better service. But when students have needs and they're struggling, they need highly skilled teachers. Teachers who perhaps have more skill than the classroom teacher. And so, investing in those teachers who are providing interventions is another place where you're gonna get a really big return on your investment, your dollars. So, and those are honestly, those are the two things the district has said they want to work on. So, I think you've, you've chosen the right things. You could speed up implementation if you had more money. You know, part of this work is because you have a certain number of leaders in the district and everything is spread pretty thin because you've got a lot of needs they're trying to meet. So, maybe some additional support within the district. But I think you're choosing the two right things, from my view, that are gonna make a difference for kids. Maybe you might, if you had more money, you might be able to provide more interventionist for students. One thing that's really interesting is the district's new literacy model, which I think is being really well-accepted and appreciated by the staff, has this idea of intervention for all, which is exactly what we would recommend. So, implementing that is gonna be very powerful here to make sure that every kid who has a need has the service that they need. That may require some additional investment, if you had the resources. If you don't, there's a tremendous amount you can do without new resources. So, I don't know if that answers your question.
Mm-hmm.
I just have one question.
This is your slide?
The two focus points that the district decided to focus on first, is that going to be accepted K through 12 or is that just at the elementary level?
No, it's K through 12. Yeah. It's a very different job at the elementary versus the high school, but it's equally needed. Yeah.
One of the difficulties we face is because our salary structure is lower than surrounding districts, the better we train teachers, the more likely we are to lose them. So, there's a trade-off there and, I mean, we still have an obligation to provide our students with the best teachers we possibly can, but we run the risk of becoming the farm team for other districts.
So, you know, I, I think about that a lot. And one of the things I think, I'm not, I'm not saying I guarantee this, but as teachers feel that they are more successful with their kids, they're gonna wanna stay. And it's that, you know, sort of sense of efficacy, like, you know, my kids are learning, I'm making a difference. Everybody we met is here because they leave in this place.
Those are the kind of people that tend to stay here.
Yeah, and I think as they feel more and more successful with their students, they're gonna wanna stay. And I think oftentimes, people leave because they feel discouraged. And, you know, hopefully, we can start to turn that around. That's not the whole answer to your concern, but I think it's a part of it.
We have to do the best we can with what we've got, so.
Diane, I do want to thank you and I want to thank your team that came on board. I want to thank also my leadership team that worked with you and all the teachers that worked with you.
Keep looking over there.
Yeah, the leadership team and the teachers and the principal for their courage. I agree with you, the areas that we picked, I think are the two areas that we need to start working. We are definitely invested in the coaching model. It is a very, I will say, high-capacity, high-financial model, but we're very invested. But we are aware that we need to make some refinement in that model and we thank you for that, for that information. Just another point, when Dr. Sewell asked the question about where do we put your, our resources and you spoke about the coaching model, we also, our district have a lot of high-needs students. I mean, Neil will tell me that the majority of students, all of our students are high-needs students. So, we do have a large amount of students that are struggling. So, we need to have the resources to help them, but at the same time, help the teachers to deal with these struggling students that they may never have experienced before coming out of college. So, thank you for bringing those to our attention and I can tell that we are on board to move forward.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Garcia, can we get a copy of the PowerPoint?
Mm-hmm, sure.
Okay.
Sure. Give it to you tomorrow, okay?
Thank you.
John, could you make sure that?
Okay. So, the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. There's lots of recognition, I will start with lots of recognition, but I do not want to go through all of them. But just to mention a couple great, great ones that 40 students at Veros Academy were selected to attend the state convention, invention convention. So, I want to make sure that you may send a little note to the Veros students. So, we have 40 of them selected to attend. Nearly half of the students that participated were selected. Also, the high school early college opportunity program, were selected one time again, this year again, by the Cape Cops Convention Committee to participate in that convention and we're happy to see that. Some athletic accomplishment there, I don't know how to pronounce his last name, but Mr. Travis.
Shashak.
Shashak, he's the son of one of our teachers at Nacho, Mrs. Prose. And he was featured in the Hartford Current about a week ago and I hope that you're able to see the article, but he was spotlighted in the Hartford Current on April 27. Travis won the Punter Invitation Meet on April 22. So, congratulations to Travis. And we also have another student from the high school, Alan Skarwinski, that, a junior at the high school, entered the Elite Distant Classic Truck Event that were held at Trinity College. So, we, we have those. An art after-school contest, the middle school students were selected as winner of the after-school contest. And I do want to, there are a bunch of other things that I, you can read them, but I do want to thank the Mansfield 7th grade students from Mansfield Middle School that partnered with Nurt Wyndham and have a great activity. I think the middle school is Robin, Robin Blonstrun Middle School 7th grade language arts students. They raised a campaign, have a campaign, I believe they sell soap and other things to provide some gifts to our students here. So, just want to, oh, and the fixer-upper for the high school. I don't know if you guys attended, but it was a fantastic event by the ECO students. Really a different type of presentation from the one they had last year, a year before. Very, not only excited presentation, but to see the students well-prepared, outstanding presentation, their tone of voice, the context of the presentation, the way they spoke, the research that they've done. And more than anything is they took something from the community. They looked at houses in the community and really worked on how they could improve their community and what can do with the houses. So, we want to thank the early college opportunity students at the high school. The Wyndham Poly-School Family and Community Expo is a reminder that will take place on the 20th, May 20. This is the third year of the expo and every year, we see an increase, an increase of more people attended. Last year, we had more than 800 participants that attended. I really want to take this opportunity to thank the Home Liaisons and Mr. Bill Stover and his group because these are the department that put it together. I also want to thank Margaret Chaney that is working with them very, very closely. But we invite you to attend. I know that Dr. Murphy attended several times before. We have a lot of community partners, they're listed here, I'm not gonna go through all of them, but as you can see, is an event well, well-attended and we start from 11 to 3 in Gilson Square downtown Willamette. So, really, if you could stop by for a little, a couple of minutes, we really appreciate that. And then, state assessment updates. As you know, we, we're in the process of finishing the S-BAC assessment. I think the 24th, yeah, 24th?
26 is the last.
26 is the last day for make-ups. We have not received lots of, I will say, concern, technology sometime a bit, but this year, I can say, much, much smoother than the year before. And the SAT score assessment that took place on April 5th, we have a 99%, 95% participation. We receive, I guess, preliminary scores today? Preliminary?
Yes.
Preliminary, we'll get them to you. I do want to say preliminary, much, much better than last year. Tremendous growth that we saw in the SAT, particularly in ELA, more than in math. But preliminary, I'm very happy with the preliminary scores. As soon as we download all of them, we get them to you. That's also a little bit of information regarding the Nacho Elementary Principal Search. As you know, Mr. Bob Pelagian is acting principal interim. So, the process has started with Mrs. Begato, Director of Finance, and she had met with teachers and she's meeting with parents, developing profile and advertising. So, that process is taking place currently. And orientation, this is the time of transition from elementary to middle school and middle to high school, very exciting times. And so, a little outline of a different orientation that will take place. I do want to highlight that the middle school, once again, is very courageous in handling their orientation, a little bit different than the traditional orientation. So, they will have the traditional orientation where parents come in the afternoon, but what they're having is orientation during the daytime, 11:30. what they're having is orientation during the daytime, 11:30, where parents come from the elementary school, the kids are, the kids are, come to the school through the bus, the parents are there, they meet the kids in the hallway, front of the school, they go to the cafeteria, have lunch, and then the parents and the students can go to any classroom they want in 6th grade. And we started this last year and we really like it. That with parents that are entering, you know, there is always a fair enter in middle school. I mean, parents are like, it's strange what this middle school would look like, what the students would be doing in middle school, so we want to work with the parents. So parents have the opportunity to see 6th grade in action, not only in an afternoon. In addition to that, we are doing two workshops for parents about transitioning to the middle school. Not necessarily transition to Wyndham Middle School, but transitioning to the middle school. What does that mean for parents? So we have two workshops selected for, for the middle school. So again, they have our orientation in the morning and one at night and these two additional orientation. Veros also have our orientation, not Veros, Veros and the middle school will be attending the orientation of the high school on the 15th and students will attend the high school. They will arrive at 10:15 and they will have lunch in the cafeteria and they also will attend the 9th grade classes. So we have two of those. Something I'm very excited about this year is the kindergarten screener. We started really looking at kindergarten screening, so Dr. Youngberg had worked with our team and this year we have what I would say a much, much, much rigorous and comprehensive kindergarten screening. And also what we're doing is that we're screening the kids as much as possible before they enter kindergarten. So we'll have some information about them now in the summer instead of waiting till September to screen them. Hopefully next year we transition to that. By next year, Dr. Youngberg and I are convinced that we'll have all of these during the summer. Only the kids that come to us in September will be able to, to screen them. There's some information to you about the review of the Food Services Department that will take place on June the 6th, so you can go ahead, June the 6th through June the 8th. And then we go to your first, first reading of the alternative education policy. This has been discussed length, length before, the mandate of having an alternative education program that is a mandate of the state, an unfunded mandate, but one that we need to have. And so the policy committee met and here is one that was sent to us by Kate.
And, and, we were just going to take a look at this, I was surprised at how ambiguous it is. It's not very specific at all, so the superintendent has considerable flexibility in terms of exactly what we decide to do here.
Yeah. It is very specific and, and the state is very specific in things that need to be there, 180, 100.
$900 hours of instruction.
Hours of instruction.
Which works out to five hours a day.
Five hours a day, those are very specific, but other than that, they leave it very flexible. You know, what needs to be in the program is there. Five hours a day, 90, 90 hours, 900 hours of instruction, what the students need to receive. But then it does, it's not ambiguous, I would say, very global and so give us the opportunity to really put something out there.
Well, it's not clear that you have to have a completely independent from the existing classes program. It looks like, at least in some cases, it's possible that students, because what we've done in the past, as I understand it, is students have, have accepted assignments from existing high school classes, done the work, submitted to the teacher for grading, although they haven't attended classes in the building, they've nevertheless done the work that's being done by the classes and submitted to this.
Yeah, but I think this one says they need to have 900 hours of instruction.
It does, but it doesn't exactly say how it has to be delivered, which...
Yeah, it could be a blended model of instruction.
Yes.
Et cetera, yeah.
And there, there are some budget implications for, for doing it different ways, which, and so there's a question of A, meeting the education goals and B, trying to stay within a reasonable cost for this thing.
So we, so we are, so we agree with that. So we're pretty sure that we'd have to have a blended model that, that include technology and courses online for our students. We do have to be aware that if the students are expelled from the high school or suspended, they can't be on the high school property. So that means that they have to be somewhere else receiving this, this instruction, but we're aware of that, Dr. Sewell, and we'll make sure that we're looking at some type of blended model. We're really looking at putting on RFP in the next couple of ways to look at what is out there and how they can help us with this.
Okay. So that's the first reading.
Okay.
Any question about any of the items?
So ready to move on to the committee reports? Okay, the Finance and Audit Committee met, what was it, two weeks ago, I believe, if I remember correctly. We have some budget transfers on the, on the agenda. We also reviewed the, the third quarter financial reports and as usual, we have some numbers to make up with special aid costing more than we'd originally budgeted for, but it looks like we'll be able to figure out how to, to do the transfer so that, as I recall, I can't remember exactly what the number was, but the percentage of money that we were spending is less than the percentage of the amount of year that we've been through.
Yes.
So there's, so there's enough space in the budget that we're, we're still in satisfactory So that's it for Finance and Audit. Planning and Design, Mrs. Lambert, I believe you have something?
I do. I need to have a motion to add to the agenda, the Board of Edu, Wyndham Board of Education's acceptance of the North Wyndham and Wyndham Center well projects. We created, this would be item number six on the agenda. We started a committee three years ago now that everyone was certain was to be quick and I told them it wouldn't and I was right for once. There are two new wells at each school, Wyndham Center and North Wyndham, they are fully functioning. They have been tested by the state and local health departments. They have, one has been abated for arsenic, there was arsenic in the water, it was detected, it is fully abated and passed the second round of testing. And the Wyndham Center well had, water had no sulfur traceable in it, like measurable, but a sulfur smell that was detected by students and staff. And so Mr. Donaldson put all-new water fountains, I used to call them bubblers, all-new water fountains on the school and they have filters. So I drank the water last night, as a matter of fact, I think there's probably still some in my, this water bottle here in my bag and it tastes perfectly fine and it has no smell to it. So the committee, which last night consisted of Mr. Calagian and myself, finished the invoices, everything is accounted for, the wells are completed, they're capped off. One has a rock covering over it, I want to say it's North Wyndham, but I'm not absolutely positive, to protect it from children and accidents and stuff like that. And we were, we had to go for an extra 10% from the town council to be able to do the arsenic abatement, but with that done, we are under budget with the additional amount that came in.
Okay.
So we are looking to have a motion added to the agenda that the Board of Education accept the wells projects at Wyndham Center and North Wyndham School as completed so that way we can go to the town council next week at their regular meeting and ask for the committee to be dissolved.
So I'll move. Second.
Thank you.
Okay, so in order to add it to the agenda, it takes a two-thirds vote of the president, which is four of us.
Okay.
Okay, so we're throwing a discussion on adding that to the agenda? If not, all in favor? That's sufficient, thank you.
And then at the School Planning and Design Committee meeting, we discussed the evacuation of, well, not evacuation, but the removal of staff and classrooms from the Kramer Building, which is going to need to be done by August of 2018, so making plans for that. We are pretty much already behind on our timeline, so that's something we're going to rapidly do. And continuing plans for the Companeros programs move to a possible different site.
Okay.
Still looking at schematics for that and numbers.
Yeah, the town has requested that we plan to leave the Kramer Building by, what's it, September or 2018?
August.
August, end of August?
No, August 1st, 2018.
August 1st, 2018?
18.
Okay. The question of whether that can be done at a savings to the taxpayers of the town is an open question.
Wow.
But we need to make, we need to make a plan so that, so that people can understand what the, what the cost potential of that is.
In that building, they are our landlord and we are their lessee to be.
That's true.
But, and so if they choose not to renew our contract, then, or our lease, then we need to find another place.
That's right. And it will presumably cost something to move somewhere else and, and those resources would have to come from the town.
Right. I, I don't disagree with that, but...
So...
If I just may add to, Mrs. Lambert, I, I think the town is ready to have their building on August 1st, 2018. I mean...
Well, to be fair, we've been saying since...
Yes.
I first got on the board that Kramer, I mean, we said we wanted the building we needed to get out of. And so now we have been given the impetus to get out of that building.
I've been having conversations with the interim town manager and I know, Dr. Murphy, that you will wish that it be extended, but I think they are, according to the mayor's letter, I mean, they, August 18 is the date they gave.
I understand, they want, they want to sell the building.
They're very strong about that.
Yeah.
Seven.
And I think they already have someone, right? I think they already have someone.
There, there has been discussion that there is someone who is intending on either taking over or buying or whatever they intend to do. The cost to renovate the building, replace the roof and other renovations that need to happen is counterproductive to keeping the building, so it's time for the building to get off of.
Any ideas? Where?
They're not going to tell us that until the sale's complete.
No, they'll ask, where are we going?
We looked at several different ideas. It depends on if Companeros moves to the middle school, it depends on, you know, what we decide to do with some of the other projects that we have coming down the pipeline. Mr. Roach, the architect, is going to bring forward to us some numbers and some space designs at the next meeting where we could possibly put central office, either temporarily or permanently. There were different ideas floated, which included the third floor of the town hall, which we looked at when I was chair of the School Planning and Design Committee and there wasn't enough room.
Yeah.
And that was before we had the entire finance department under the, the same roof as the Board of Education. They looked, they said to look at some buildings on Main Street. I don't think that with the amount of municipal buildings we have that we should be renting from a private building owner. There are municipal buildings that are empty, half-empty, we should try and capitalize on those. However, the discussion was also had that our intent, until we are done with some of the renovations that we need to do, is to keep room in some of our buildings for swing space. If we have to renovate half of a building, to make sure there's somewhere for those students to go, like we did with the Nachog emergency, moving them into the middle school. The middle school is not necessarily the place that would be swing space, depending on what project we're working on. So filling our buildings to bulging or overcapacity to accommodate the preschool students and central offices is not in the best interest of our long-term master plan.
So I, I guess this new, the incorporation of the leave in the building by August 18, bringing a new factor, new variable to this entire master plan, definitely. But my, my concern is not the central office, I guess we, as I said to you, we can work from home. We can work from home, but he will disagree with that. But we have 250 preschoolers that we have to find, figure out where we put them and that's our first priority.
That's, that's the crucial piece because, because you can't just move the preschoolers into a, into building.
Now, the preschoolers require...
Among other things, preschoolers require a bathroom facility in every classroom.
In every classroom, a special-sized bathroom and all those little things, so...
So the renovation cost, the renovation cost is substantial and the, one of the real issues is as fast as we can move on that, the process of getting all of that done through the state, as we have discovered in putting the roof on the Nachog building and putting the roof on this building, there's a, there's a maximum speed with which you can get stuff through the state.
Exactly.
That may make it really difficult to meet a deadline.
Glaciers, look.
Yes, yes. Yeah, glacier is the maximum speed.
So Wayne is sending me something this week, we, I met with him on Monday and he's sending, he's bringing something next week, but you're totally right. I mean, we can move fast as much as we can. The state is much more where they will...
They have a process.
They have a process. And the process take 10 days here, 15 days here, 30 days here, and so, but the other question will be, well, yeah, I, I guess where the money is going to come for that renovation and that is, I guess from the...
Well, we'd like to get as much of the money as possible from the, from the state and so, which means that we have to, that we have to wait on their process, which, which may make it difficult to accommodate the town-state. That's, that's...
There's also discussion about moving forward on the high school renovation to get paperwork and such filed before the July 1st deadline, when the reimbursement rate will drop and the space configurations will change, which point we need to have an EDO49 approved by the board last week. We, we need to move on that with some haste to get that approved by the board.
We don't know about the high school renovation, Brian.
If we don't at least get the paperwork filed saying that we're intending to renovate the high school and a possible, like, a bare-bones kind of budget for it or, and plan for it, then our reimbursement rate goes up as of July 1st, our reimbursement rate goes down, so the costs of town will go up if we don't have it done by July 1st. But we are waiting on this study done by the Board of Finance.
We already, if I may, we already went and hit a little plan about that, I will give you some information during my packet this week. But what we decide is to go ahead and really start the process and, you know, we don't have any control. One of, one of the processes, the town has to approve those three resolutions.
Mm-hmm.
And you, the board, has to approve the ESPEC. So we'll bring you the ESPEC, the next board meeting and hope you can approve it in June and that you have a couple of weeks for discussion and ask questions, a couple of other things that you wanted out of the ESPEC already, remove them from the ESPEC. The other, however, the town will have to have their resolution on June 6th. I will ask for your help, members of the town council. I have that sent in to them yet, I want to speak to Mr. DeBivo, I know that he is the chair of the town council. I was a little area about putting him on the, on the board agenda before budget referendum and so I thought that maybe we should wait till after the budget referendum and then put it on the agenda. But I encourage all of you to really speak to your town council members to support this and the resolution, you will see the resolution, they're not asking them to, to give the money, what they're asking them is that they support the project, et cetera, et cetera.
Essentially, it's a placeholder submission so that we can qualify for the highest possible state reimbursement.
But they do ask them to set a date for referendum and one other resolution. And so we're saying, set a date for November or December for, for, for the referendum. So I'll send them to you, you can have a look at them and I encourage you to, as much as you can support it with the town council, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Because they have to vote for it. If they don't, if they don't pass it, it doesn't matter that we complete the EDO49.
Right.
I mean, they have to pass that if they don't.
Then we're dead in the water.
We're dead in the water, right.
And then we have to pay more when the time comes and something else caves in.
Right.
So let me ask a question, okay? Once the result of this study is completed, what's next? Because they're going to come up with or suggest what would be the first option, second option, or they're just going to bring numbers, right?
No, no, the, the study is going to provide data.
Data.
Not, we ask them three different questions.
Right.
They're going to provide data in response to those, to those questions, in which case there are going to have to be public meetings and various hearings and presentations for people to decide what to do with the results of the, so the study itself is not designed to tell us what to do, it's designed to tell us the implications of those three possible actions.
I understand, but how can we have a placeholder for something that is not having even been decided?
Well, you, right, so the three things are...
How can we have a placeholder for the state saying, in case this is the option that, you know, people chose, we want a placeholder?
Well, if we have, if we decide not to renovate the high schools, I mean, one of the choices was outsource the...
But that's going to happen after.
Yes, but you can withdraw, you can withdraw the paperwork if, if that happens. If we decide to do a smaller project than when we put the placeholder in, we just downsize the project. You want to put in a placeholder for the biggest thing you're going to need.
Our reimbursement also shrinks as we break this stuff into smaller projects.
And the state will accept us, even though they're not...
It's a placeholder, it's, it's our intent to do this project.
But if you don't have...
But if we decide as a board that that's not in the best interest of the high school or us or whatever right now, then we can withdraw the project.
So we're going to have to use the numbers that they provide to us?
Correct.
Yes.
Yep. Fortunately, I think when you file the EDO49, you don't have to, you don't have to put in, put in a skeleton budget, is that correct, Mrs. Lambert?
I'm sorry?
If you file the EDO49, you only put in a skeleton budget proposal.
You put a projected cost estimate. You put a projected cost estimate. That's what they call it, a projected cost estimate, what we think it's going to cost with everything.
But that's subject to later adjustment also.
Correct.
But you do have to, the town council, you have to give the town council a projected number also. So in their resolution, they have to have a number.
But that doesn't mean they're committed to spending the money. That doesn't mean that they're committed to spend the money. They need to understand that they're not locked into that.
So who submits this proposal? The town or the board?
The board of ed.
We'll have to start it.
The board of ed submits the proposal.
The town does not have to.
With the endorsement of the town and the board of finance.
So the key word here is endorsement of the town. The proposal has no validity if it doesn't have the approval of the three resolution from the town, meaning it will not even be accepted by the state of education if it doesn't have those three resolutions. One, that the one that approved the project. Two, that there is.
A referendum date.
A referendum date. And three, that this is the money that they're requesting.
And, I mean, it's a state project. There, I think the state looks at it and goes, all right, $2 million. Well, we expect four by the time we're done. You know what I'm saying? I don't think they ever expect any project to come in exactly at budget. But we have to give them an estimate of what we think the project is going to cost for the renovations, renovate as new, as we intend to do. Otherwise, it's broken up to smaller projects. Our reimbursement rate goes down. So in the long run, it's going to be more expensive to the town and to the taxpayer. They're going to end up bonding more. They're going to pay more in interest. However, seeing that number is going to be a little bit of a shock, I think, for people at first, and that's going to raise some rattle. But I think this study, if it comes out as I think it will, and I am not on the committee, I have no knowledge of what it's going to come out at, I think it's going to say that not only do we want to keep the high school as the high school, keep our students local, not have to transport them out. I'm not sure there's room in other schools to take them. But I believe that we should start thinking about Wyndham as a regional hub for other schools to start sending their students to help other towns save funds. And possibly still have, you know, I mean, we can create a regional board of education or something like that if we feel the need to, but, but still have control over their student.
So are we confident that the town council and the board of finance will endorse that project?
I have been doing this project now for four years, and I have been for both the town council and the board of finance, and I am not confident that they will endorse this project.
So if they don't endorse, we can also live it.
Well, it's, it's interesting to contemplate the position that they're going to be in, which is, if you don't support this project, it's going to cost you more later. It's going to cost you a lot more later.
Do we have a plan B?
The plan B is to spend maybe 50% more later. I think that might motivate them to go ahead and, because they're not locked in. They get, they get the change of mind down low, but it's a lock.
It's got a wide option. See, that's, that's my point.
The study is going to say whether or not, it is one question, whether or not there is a viable option to send our students to other towns for their high school education and close Wyndham High School. That was the question. They looked at other towns, their ability to absorb our students, the cost, the transportation, all of those things. The willingness of other towns to take our students, whether or not they have space. They looked at those things, and they're going to make a recommendation as to whether or not they think it's a viable financial option to send our students to other towns. That's the entire purpose of that study.
And it's coming to you.
I thought plan B was move out of town.
It's, it's not even really a recommendation. It's, it's can you do this and here's what it would cost if you did. And the answer might be, there's no reasonable way you can do this. That's a possible answer.
So if I'm a town resident, I'd be looking at, okay, how much is it going to cost us to send versus how much it would cost us to bill and all of those things. So we're going to have to really, I don't know the result of the study yet. We haven't received it. We know it's coming by the end of this month, which is going to be very interesting.
It's going to be interesting to talk about.
Because not only money is transportation of those kids, is not having a high school in your community.
Special ed costs. They can charge the rate card if we send them out, which is considerably higher than what we can do it if we do it in-house. There is the question of what happens when a school district that has accepted a Wyndham student expels or.
Send them back to us.
Sends them back to us. What do we do with them then? Do we have to have another alternative high school then, which defeats the purpose of not having a high school? So there are lots of questions that, that were raised during the process. And I am hopeful that the report will give us the answer to all of those. Does that help?
So you'll have it?
No, just do my answers help?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Thank you. But I just wanted to know.
Bill, when we look into having it by the end of the month, by the end of May, right?
Joe Townsley is still looking for a date to be given. So he'll be contacting Paul to find out what is a reasonable date. I think he's substantially done at this point. He's just looking for a date to do the presentation.
Do the presentation. So by the end of the month, you guys should have it.
So a royal day at the beach. Is that, is that concluded, the planning and design report?
I think that, that's all I have to report. If anybody had any questions, I can answer to the best of my knowledge.
So, policy committee, and I attended that one, so, and there's, the only new thing that's, the alternative education policies come out of committee, there's a couple of others. I don't remember. I don't have the agenda.
They, they look at several policies. I know only one came up, but they're linked to discussion about some others. First of all, the one that has to do with gifts.
Oh, yeah, the gift, the gift policy, which we looked at before and sent back.
A lot of time on the gift policy, discussing that. And we're still doing some research on that policy because there's so much involved in that policy. And we're looking at our schools, what teachers are using, fund.
Crowdfunding.
Crowdfunding, yes. We're looking at that. So this policy is not going to come to you like right away because it has a lot more discussion, I mean, I'm on the committee.
And then there's, there's also, there's the one on, can't remember exactly what the policy is, but it was a question, Mr. French had asked a question about what happens if a child brings a soda to school?
Well, that's not over yet, but go ahead.
Oh, so I thought we did send you the information. We still.
No, because you're still, want to pass that on action item one, so.
I thought we made your request by sending you the.
It said there were no changes, though.
Yes. It said there were no changes to the.
That's the wellness policy. Okay, so that is on the, on the action item. So we should have that.
That was going to be my first question because there were no changes.
It turns out that as long as a student doesn't set up shop and market the sodas, you know, if they bring them for their own consumption, or even if they give them to their classmates for free, they can do that. But we can't, as a district, offer them for sale.
Right. And I just wanted a clarification that that was whatever is available by the school system, which means that you could have somebody else bring in their own.
Yeah, they can, they can bring them from home.
But it doesn't still clearly say that. There's one word in there that says available on school grounds. We'll get into that when we get there.
Okay.
Well, we're a policy committee now. Can we wait till the next?
All right. So, at any rate, the policy committee is still working its way through a couple of other policies. Executive committee, I don't believe this minute.
And they canceled their meeting for tomorrow?
Yes. The problem is, is our chair is tied up with the legislature trying to get the session over. Yeah. Well, the legislature actually finished, what's her date, June 7th? The likelihood of them finishing by June, they're going to have to stop the clock, right? That's one of those deals where they freeze the clock for weeks and weeks.
Months.
June 7th will continue into August this year.
I have a question regarding that. It has something to do with the board, but is it correct that if they don't have the budget done by the deadline, then the governor's budget goes into effect, his recommended budget? Isn't that correct?
I don't think so. And what they, what they have a habit of doing.
We've worked to last year's budget, but they continue on.
Somebody said the governor's budget goes.
Yeah. What they have a habit of doing is declaring that the clock is frozen, and they just keep meeting as if, as if time stands still. Okay, so that brings us to action items. Okay, so I'll accept the motion to approve the Wyndham Public Students Wellness Policy?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Mr. French, you had a question about the wellness policy?
Yes, I did. I just want to make sure it's not going to be illegal for a student to come into school or to pass out soda to another person. It's not very clear in the, how it was written. And then it said there were no changes to this.
Yeah. I, I think the policy says that they cannot fundraise those things, sodas, et cetera, et cetera. Remember, we are health to food, health to food, health food center school. The D S tells us, S D S tells us what we can have and what we cannot have. So sodas and those things have to be handled at a different period of time. I think it's 30 minutes after school is over.
An hour before and an hour after.
Right, after.
But it doesn't say, it doesn't include students bringing it in. And I just wanted a clarification that students were going to be able to bring in their own soda if they wished to, or Gatorade.
Am I wrong? I read the policy is saying, is specifically saying for sale.
For sale, yeah.
No, you go back in, I went back into it a few minutes ago. It takes me a while to dig it back up. But it basically, there's one word there that you could kind of think that it was what is available by the school system, but it's not very clear provided by a school system. So if you're saying anything provided by school system cannot be soda.
So we have to take a look at that because our interpretation is for sale. Anything that is for sale. We were not thinking about.
Yeah, no, there was, it was section B of the policy intent rationale.
The policy's not attached to this board packet. It was attached to that?
It was, you got to go back to.
All right. I don't have it in front of me right this very second.
You have to go digging through.
So that means that fundraisers like cookie dough sales or butter braids, those are now forbidden as well?
Thirty minutes before, 30 minutes after.
So students can take it home and sell it, and then it can be handed out at the end of the school day or something like that?
At the end of the school day, 30 minutes after school.
No, 60.
Sixty.
Sixty, right, yeah, one hour.
One hour before, one hour after.
So, so like Girl Scout cookies, where you have a list, sign up, collect one.
That's how most, most of those fundraisers are done nowadays for PTOs. Well, here's the problem is that PTOs fund buses and field trips and stuff like that. So if you take away their funding stream, which is often, I mean, sometimes it's a tchotchke wrapping paper and stuff like that. But I know Sweeney, for years, we did cookie dough and butter braids and stuff like that. If you take away that funding stream, then they don't get buses for field trips or, you know, things that they need like that, things for field day, that kind of stuff. So they lose out on those opportunities because of this policy. So it's got different ramifications that I'm concerned about.
Well, the policy's a little behind. I mean, we're bringing it to a little late. This actually went a little bit in effect last year. And I tell you what happened, that we have a parent that complained to the state about our fundraising activities, and the state came down on us. And so we had to really advise schools and PTOs to really adhere to that state policy. So we're reaching out. But last year, Eric Volt had meeting in every school. He went to every school and met with every PTO and explained him this policy, and they start adhering to it, just because we already, the state had came down on us last year for not following it.
Right. So they can or they can't do these fundraisers? Now I'm confused.
They can, but it goes up to adhere to the time.
Okay.
To the time.
The forms can be handed out during the school day if you take it home.
During the school day.
But the food can't be.
It's just the food. Cannot be delivered. They can have the form, they can return the form, et cetera, et cetera.
To the extent possible of food and beverages available on school grounds. It has nothing to do about purchase.
Says soda and any carbonated beverages that do not contain 100% fruit juice are not allowed on school grounds at any time during the school day or one hour prior to the start of the school day to the period of one hour after the end of the academic school day.
Okay, so.
So it doesn't say.
Will we be doing filings to that if we added for sale to that statement?
Well.
It says they would not be available for sale.
It cannot be provided by the school during this period of time is what you need to say.
And it'll be provided by the, by the school?
Correct. If you do that, then you'll be all right.
All right, so.
Available by the school.
So would you like to move to amend that to say available, made available by the school?
May I say something? I'm, I'm not trying to interfere with your recommendation for the policy, but on the other hand, I just want to remind you that particularly high school students, I don't think elementary or middle school, teachers have their rules in a classroom, and they don't want kids drinking sodas or during their teaching. So I don't want the policy that would encourage students to bring sodas.
Do you want me to bring out lunch?
Oh, they're lunch. Lunch is different, but I just want.
No, no, I'm not saying you can bring your canned soda in and drink it, you know, your moxie.
You're saying that you can't, I believe what you want to do is propose that the policies say that they cannot be made available by the school.
Correct. The sodas should not be provided by the school or accessible through the school.
So that doesn't change any of the things that the teachers are in classrooms. It just, instead of just saying they can't be made available, we're saying they can't be made available by the school to make it clear that. Things that are bought in by students or others is not.
Correct. I think that clears it up for me.
Okay.
But, but the vending machines, let me go back. I'm not trying to be a devil's advocate here, but the vending machine necessarily are for students, are for teachers. I mean, the teachers are the one that use the vending machines.
Vending machines in the teacher's lounge can have whatever they want in them, as long as they don't take them out of the teacher's lounge. But down by, here at the high school, down by the sports wing in the cafeteria, there are vending machines. They can have water, they can have 100% fruit juice, that kind of stuff, but they can't have soda or non-fruit juice.
Whatever.
Most of them have water, especially the one down in the sports wing. There's bottled water down there with the sports caps and stuff like that.
Wouldn't kill the teachers to drink healthy drinks.
Well, they have some.
They need caffeine.
Bloody marys.
They need a coffee. 100% fruit vegetable, you're all set. So I, I, yeah, I make that motion. We can add that. Janet, can we add that there to that, that little word?
She's looking right now.
Okay.
So I make a motion to accept the wellness policy as amended to include that the beverages cannot be.
We had a motion to amend, but enough, enough, no. Do I have a second to amend?
Oh, she's, she's not done with her, her motion. She's still doing.
You're doing the amend or the? I'm making a motion to amend the policy.
Yeah, because she made the motion originally.
I thought you made the motion, Mr. French.
Oh, yeah, no, I didn't.
No, you made the original motion.
Oh, yes, I did make the original motion.
So you are wanting to amend your motion?
I'm amending, thank you. I knew I was doing the right thing, and then I got.
And I second the original motion.
You'll have to resecond my amended motion. So I amend the motion to say that it can, on paragraph B, under policy intent rationale, to say that the beverages, non-100% fruit juice beverages cannot be provided by the school or through the school.
Not be made available by the school. I think it's what they, just has to put it by the school in the existing language, correct?
Whatever verbiage you really feel necessary, Dr. Stoll. It was my amendment, though.
Okay. Just as simple as possible. Is that, is that satisfactory to the second?
What I'm amending it to say.
Okay.
No, I.
I think we all know what you want.
I have that motion yet because she had not finished.
Well, I hadn't finished the motion that I got corrected before I finished it. It was my amendment, so.
Exactly.
But, okay. I say not to be provided by or through the school. Was my amended verbiage. Thank you.
Okay.
No, I can second that one.
You sure?
Positive.
All right.
Eighty percent.
So any further discussion? Are we ready to throw in the amended motion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, so now we can go to, whoops, can't get back up to the, all right, next item on the agenda. Now, this is fun. I entertain a motion to accept a donation to the music department?
So moved.
Second.
Is any discussion about this donation? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, recommend approval of budget transfers in reference four, except the.
So moved? Second.
Okay, these are all fairly smalls.
Very small.
Yeah.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Recommend the approval of the IDEA grant.
Application?
Accept a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion?
This is a yearly grant, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. When may we ever turn down money?
Be surprised.
If there's no discussion, I'm in favor. Thank you. Let's see. Item five, approval of the VCT removal plan?
Floor tiles.
Floor tiles. VCT are.
Oh, this is.
It really should say VAT tile.
So what does VCT stand for?
VCT stands for vinyl composition tile. VA is vinyl asbestos tile. And that's what you're removing, because there was asbestos in floor tile for another year.
So we need another motion to change that?
I'm just giving you a hint. No, but I just expressed it. That's why they took.
I think the plan in, in, in reference is sufficient to get the job done, however.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify what VCT stood for.
Good. Any, any further discussion? Do I get a motion?
You didn't get a motion.
A second.
Thank you.
Melissa, you did.
Yeah.
She moved and John seconded, Mr. French seconded. Is there's no further discussion?
Wayne, I just want to say, we did, Mr. Donaldson was at the Wells Committee meeting last night, and we did discuss this project. They are removing tiles and polishing the concrete. Wayne is slowly trying to move into that venue throughout all of our buildings. We've done some here at the high school, some at the middle school, a considerable amount now at Wyndham Center, and he's trying to do another section of it. And we are looking for state reimbursement. Therefore, we have to submit this and get reimbursement. And the town will form a building committee on this. A.
A building committee, no less.
On this, a renovation committee, a town committee, like they did for the Wells and the high school roof and the microgrid and stuff like that. So, so that'll be submitted. He just asked me to speak to that. There are, there is asbestos in these tiles, so He just asked me to speak to that. There are, there is asbestos in these tiles, so an abatement will be necessary. It'll be done during the summer, and he's anticipating summer of 2018 because we're a little bit behind the eight ball on this project as well.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? Thank you. Okay. Item six.
Yes.
Approval of the wells at North Wyndham School and Wyndham Center School, accepting the wells at those two schools.
With lotion, shampoo.
Okay. I think Mrs. Lambert explained it in some detail. Or are there any further discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, we have possibility of public comment. That's the end of the action items unless there's something else to be added. So there's possibility, if anyone wished to make public comment before we go to executive session? Okay.
I move we go into executive.
Okay. There's two eights there.
I move we go into executive session to discuss items, exempt items pertaining to personnel matters and labor negotiations.
Second.
Okay.
I'd like to discuss on that. I'd like to discuss on that. It's not very clear why we're going into executive session. The last one we went into basically was, I deem illegal. We're not being very specific about this. This is just like being a placeholder at every meeting, and that's not what executive session's all about, and I think we need to get a clarification from our attorney on this, because this is not the right direction to go. It doesn't state who it's for, what it's about.
It can't, personnel matter can't.
It, if it's, but it says or labor negotiations, and labor negotiations.
And labor negotiations.
It is very vague. It's got to be much more precise while you're going into executive session.
The personnel can't be more precise, because that violates confidentiality. I don't know what more the labor negotiation could be precise. I don't, I don't know what we're talking about on that. But I know any personnel matter can only say personnel matter. I looked into it when I was chair, so I know for that one, it can only say personnel matter. I don't know about labor negotiations.
The thing is, it's very vague, and it should be, it needs to be changed.
I have a question. I received a letter this morning stating that there's a possibility that my employment with the Board of Education could be discussed in an executive meeting. If so, I have the right to have that in public.
Okay, so I guess I'll go on to say that if, if that's the case, then we need to know about that, why we're going in executive session. I want to know why I'm going in.
Well, I'm not discussing employment of anyone. That's not correct. So there's a matter of practice. The district received a letter from the town on December 17th informing the district that at this time, Mr. Johnson is an employee of the town with all the benefits. Let me back up. Before this date, Mr. Johnson was an employee at the town and the school board jointly.
Well, the contract. Well, the contract expired in October.
Okay, the contract expired in October, and was never renewed.
Well, the town renewed it.
And December 17, Mrs. Jolynn Baguette received a letter from the town saying that on this day, effective this day, Mr., according to Mr. Neil Beats, have directed the Department of Finance to reclassify Mr. Christian Johnson as an employee of the town only with all benefits, et cetera. That has put the school district in a very precarious position. And by the way, this is not about Mr. Johnson. This is about practice. Okay, technically, we don't have a business manager, technically. So this is not about Mr. Johnson. I want it clear, it's about technicality. Let me finish. So Mr. Johnson was notified. So this discussion is not about Mr. Johnson. It's about, does the school board of education has a business manager or not? Mrs., the director of HR has informed me that based on community law, we are required to have a business manager. So I wanted to be clear, it's not a discussion about Mr. Johnson, it's a matter of practice and technical. By the town informing us that he is an employee now of the town, only of the town, and paid 100% by the town, technically, we don't have a business person.
Yeah, that's the other piece. The town took over his payroll, too.
Can I just say one thing? I work 60% of my time goes to the Board of Education, and 40% of my time goes to the town, and that has been the way for the past three and a half years that I've worked here. And when I was paid by the Board of Education 100%, my salary was allocated to the town every year on a 40% basis. A letter was sent to Dr. Garcia stating that like the school resource officer, my payroll would now be allocated to the Board of Education 40%. I work 60% for the Board of Education, I work 40% for the town. It doesn't matter who pays me, my salary is allocated that way. I am employed by both. Technically, I am employed by both entities.
No, actually, you're not.
My salary is allocated.
You're not, you're not employed by the Board, wait a minute. You're not employed by the Board of Education. The town cannot employ you by the Board of Education. The Board of Education is a separate entity from the town, and, and your contract with the Board of Education expired in October. It has not been renewed.
I'm saying I'm working still 60% of my time for the Board of Education, if not 80 and 90% of my time, because we are so resource efficient in finance that I am doing Rita's job, and Rita's doing the payroll manager's job. It's been this way for nine months.
So let me, let me go back to some.
So how are you going to do without me?
We need to take away the personal issue, but this is not about a person, and let's get it clear, because this is not about a person. This is about the town informing the Board of Education in writing that Mr., the director of finance is an employee of the town with all the benefits.
Do you have a copy of that letter for each of us?
Right here.
Can we have it?
Sure.
Please. I'm not doubting anybody. I'd just like to see.
So let me bring up the thing, you're saying it's not personal, but back in October, there's no reason why Mr. Johnson didn't have a contract extended to the board except where they were issued.
I didn't have a contract for three hours. It was delivered to me. It was taken back to me.
The director of HR can answer the question. That's incorrect.
Nobody is.
I just want to clarify, Mr. Johnson, you'd like to keep this discussion in public?
Yes, I will, because I think it relates to me, and I don't think it's technical.
I don't think it is either.
And here's a letter from Mr. Beats.
I think it's disingenuous.
Okay, we cannot have a kind of discussion. I'm discussing a techni, I'm discussing a matter of practice. I'm the one discussing it. So those kind of comments by somebody that's supposed to report to me are unacceptable. I will not be tolerating. So if you want to discuss the matter of practice, we will, but we have to be professional, and I expect you to be professional. We're discussing a matter of practice. The question is, based on an information from the town, does the Board of Education has currently a director of finance, yes or no? That all need to be discussed.
Business managers, the technical title.
So that's the question, and I am happy to move this to another day, to another time. This does not need to be done tonight. I am happy to move that to another day or to another time.
I said, you know, we started this discussion, I don't know, some time ago, and then we brought in lawyers, and what did the lawyers say? I mean, what's been going on, all right? We still haven't resolved the issue.
Yes.
And it seems like, so, it should really be a simple matter. It should be.
Dr. Sewell?
Yes?
Thank you, thank you. This is the most ridiculous thing that I have ever gone through in the 30 years I have worked with the town. There is no doubt that Christian Johnson is the head of the finance department for both the town and it should be for this Board of Education. I don't know what has gone on here personally, or, or what has evolved through here, but this is the most ridiculous thing, and it's coming at a time just before budget vote.
Mr., may I say, and I said, we can put this off. I have no problem.
No, I, I've had it.
I think you've put it off enough.
I, I have been working on the subcommittee. The subcommittee has been put to bed for the last three months because of the budget situation. This should be resolved. We are working towards a direction that Christian Johnson is going to be the head of the finances for all of Wyndham. If you need a director of education for yourself, you could possibly do, I'm, that's why I'm, I'm looking at you. So if that's how you feel, then you, we may have to look at you being able to hire this. But until we get through this pitfall, Mr. Johnson is our director of finance. I have had some conversation. Town attorney is very clear. He is an employee of the town. He is working 60% at least for the Board of Education, and I just don't understand why we're having such a war with a finance department. It's just incredibly insane in this town.
I want to say something regarding that, okay? Why, okay, this is Paul Hungo. Who's Paul Hungo?
He's the director.
Director.
The town's.
Financial director. The finance department to reclassify financial director Chris Johnson from a Board of Education employee to a town of Wyndham employee. What is the meaning of that, Mr. French, to you?
The way I understand it is that they were just expecting the Board of Education to pay their 60% share back to them.
Reclassifying. I'm not talking about payment. Reclassifying, okay? Director Chris Johnson from a Board of Education employee to a town of Wyndham employee. What is the meaning of reclassifying? What is implied for this? To me, it means that Mr. Johnson doesn't have anything else to do with us.
And this is why.
From the Board of Education to the Wyndham town. That's why I wanted lawyers. I suggested lawyers.
We had an opinion from a lawyer. We were at the meeting, but we had an opinion from a lawyer.
So what did he say? Why I was still arguing?
So the town, town attorney says we're wrong. Our attorney says the town attorney's wrong.
Let's be careful we don't cross over into executives, previously privileged executive session.
No, I'm just saying what's been clear, as far as that's concerned. Thank you.
I'm just referring to what I'm reading, that I was handed to everybody.
The situation that I see as a subcommittee member is that there's just this stupid war going on, and it was our town manager at the time versus our superintendent, and all I saw was a loggerhead. Instead of coming to a good judgment situation and settling, it has just become who's going to last the longest, and it has not, it has not turned out very well for this community. This needs to end, and the town is as much its fault as the Board of Education is by drawing a line in the sand, and neither one of us are crossing to say, okay, we're sorry, we did the wrong thing, let's resolve the issue. All right, and that's where we need to go through here. Chris Johnson should not be used as a leverage handle.
I agree with that. It's just that I don't understand these messages, you know, that are.
I understand.
Mine, not yours, his use, not mine, and so forth.
Let's be real, Lieutenant would like to.
And the superintendent should not be put in this position, because I have a district to, to run. I do, whoever said, I feel very confident that whoever is selected as the next town manager, we're willing to work with that person, willing to have that conversation. I don't know who has been selected or when they're going to be selected, but we are willing to have that conversation and to work collaboratively. So the letter that I just gave you came from the previous town manager.
Yep.
Okay, Neil Beats. Okay, this was not started by the, by the school board whatsoever, so I want to be clear. This did not start by the town, by the school board. It started by the town. We are willing to give an opportunity to the new person that comes on board to have a discussion with him, to start from scratch, and we are, today we have a discussion in my office with HR. We think that it's possible, and we think that we can come to an agreement. Okay, so I want it to be clear, but it's also not fair for Dr. Garcia to be put in this position, because my job is to protect the school district. And when I have a letter that said, we don't have a director of finance, I have to bring it to your attention, because then we're liable. So this is not Dr. Garcia. This is a matter of practice, not a matter of a particular person.
So this, this has just gotten out of hand since October, and we're all guilty here. It needs to stop.
Actually, we've been sitting waiting for the town council to do something since at least November, when this issue first came up. However, the current situation, given Mr. Hungo's letter in December, and the fact that the town took over the, Mr. Johnson's payroll as of the 1st of January, is that we don't have a contract with Mr. Johnson, and we're not paying Mr. Johnson. From the state's point of view, he cannot represent us as the business manager. That's, that is, that is the legal status at the moment. So we need to appoint someone, at least for the time being, to be our business manager, and then settle the rest of it at some other time. That's essentially where we're at.
We should have appointed Christian Johnson for another year extension while we're cleaning this up, and it just because there was issues, and I believe it's personal issues, that we haven't gotten that far, and we should have resolved that, and we would have gotten this all done and set as we needed to.
There was a proposal, as I recall, sometime before the 1st of January, to do something like that. It never happened.
And you, you asked me to back. I wanted to go.
Well, we had.
In October.
We never saw the, we never, the administration finance committee.
Let me say something here. In October, when this flared up, okay, I suggested that we take this and we, we talk to the council, because, you know, we have an encounter between the town manager and our superintendent, okay, for whatever reason. So we need to resolve that. Those are our employees, our responsibilities, and we're not doing a very good job with this. So we need to talk directly with the town council and resolve this issue. Do you disagree with me at that time? We're still at the same, same point that we were in October.
Correct.
I strongly suggest that we meet with the town council and just resolve this issue for once and forever.
This is, that's micromanaging. The finance director for the town and the business manager for the Board of Education work for the town manager and the superintendent. They don't work for the town council, and they don't work for the Board of Education. The ultimate resolution of this matter has to take place between the superintendent and the town manager once that person is employed. The business manager is not our employee, it's the superintendent's employee. The town finance manager is not the town council's employee, it's the, it's the town manager's employee.
Do we know when the new person's coming on board?
Soon.
The decisions are going, are taking place now, finalizing.
So what happens to the new person?
I was the same view on the weekend.
I understand.
The same direction.
So it's like to vote or.
I don't think, I think we need to do something at a higher level.
Well, what we need to do is clean up our act with the state and have somebody that we can, we can point to that, that represents us as.
Well, we can have Chris Johnson still be more than both in a second.
No, he's not under contract to us.
He can be under contract.
No, wait a minute.
You, we could, let's get the councils together. Let's get the two legals heads together, along with Dr. Garcia.
That can happen, but it doesn't have to happen tonight.
No. Well, let's get the thing going in the right direction.
All right, in the meantime, let's, let's deal with the issue in front of us.
No, the issue in front of us is, I'm still considering.
The issue in front of us is that we're not in compliance with state statute to have a business manager under contract. But we have a person under contract who's qualified to be business manager, so we can name an interim business manager and settle that piece, and then let the rest of it take care of itself later.
I would suggest that interim.
I totally disagree. Chris Johnson is our finance director. He represents the Board of Education.
He is not our finance director, and he hasn't been. It doesn't matter what he's been doing with his time legally. He has been a town employee solely since the 1st of January.
So why did Mr. Hungo send this letter? It's this email saying, you know, I mean that.
Well, that's the town's doing.
Reclassifying, why?
Mrs. Lambert?
Thank you. I don't mind waiting my turn, but I expect to be accepted in order. I think that this stems from a conflict of personality between people at central office. We don't have a contract because one party was reticent to renew a contract. I understand that. I think as a board, we need to direct Dr. Garcia to renew a one-year, six-month, whatever the board feels is appropriate contract with Mr. Johnson to continue doing his job and work with the town council and both legal teams, ours and the town councils, and/or the new town manager, however that works out, to come to an agreement. The charter says we have to have one financial director, director of the finance department, financial director, town finance director, town board finance director, whatever you want to legally call it. We are obligated to follow the charter, because we are a board of the town under that charter. Therefore, Mr. Johnson and Dr. Garcia knew that there was a unified finance director when she was hired, and said she can work with anybody and it will be fine. She was made aware of that in her second interview.
Can I point out a small detail?
Let me finish. So I think that we need to continue with one finance director. If there are bugs that need to be worked out, if there are evaluation things, there is a deadline. The end of this one-year, six-month, nine-month contract with Mr. Johnson, there needs to be a resolution, and that needs to put on Dr. Garcia as the CEO of our district. Thank you.
I would like to point out that the town is not following the charter. The charter does not permit the town to reclassify the director of finance as a town employee. All right, and in fact, I have that opinion from the person that wrote the article that's in the charter. So, so the fact that, our, our problem stems from the fact that the town has separated itself from the charter provision. We didn't separate ourselves from the charter provision. The town did. Okay, so they put us in an untenable position, and I don't think we should be doing oddball things here. All we have to do, we don't have to change anybody's employment status on our own. We have an employee who's qualified to serve as our business manager until the rest of it gets sorted out. So we don't have to sort it out, and we shouldn't. It's not our job.
Mr., Dr. Sewell, you had children. I'm sure you told them from time to time, two wrongs don't make a right. So I think not doing what we're supposed to do as the Board of Education by usurping Mr. Johnson's office is untoward.
May I, I just want to recall, to remind Mrs. Lambert, I was the person that suggested to give Mr. Johnson the one-year contract. So it came from me. I was the one that suggested. I was the one that suggested a plan of improvement and a one-year contract. I don't want to say, I'm not going to say more because of personal matter, but I was the one that suggested that to the Board.
But a contract was never issued.
Exactly. But I was the person that made the suggestion.
But why was the contract never issued?
Because it went to the Council, the Small Committee, the Tribe Board, etc.
Whatever you guys call yourselves.
Yeah.
What's that?
Tribe Board, Tribe Committee, Finance Tribe Board, what do you guys call yourselves?
Whatever they call them.
Just a Finance Committee. But we already had somewhere of a game plan which ended up not coming forward because of the budget situation. But needless to say, we have a real problem down the hill as far as up the hill.
Like I said, I think the new person that comes on board, we'll be able to work with that new person. We definitely are willing to do that. And so we're just hoping, I am pressing my finger on the comment board early, I don't know who's coming, but we will definitely work with the new person.
I don't think we want to create a more complicated legal situation than the one that already exists. You've got a new Town Manager who's going to get this dumped in his lap or his or her lap surprise because I'm sure that the interview process didn't say, well, we're going to have this to deal with on day one. And so I don't think we ought to be creating any contracts that don't already exist. Until the Town Manager arrives, meets with the Superintendent, and they decide what they want to do.
Okay. Well, you know, I'd like to add to the agenda for this evening that we will, I would like to extend Chris Johnson's use as Board of Education Finance Director retro to October of this year. I would like to add that to the agenda and vote on that issue tonight.
I'll second adding it to the agenda.
Okay. It takes four votes? Any discussion?
Discussion, yes. My point of view is that...
Dr. Gomez, all we're doing is adding it to the agenda first. We have to add it to the agenda.
Discussion would be added, yeah. Okay, I feel like we're discussing, yes.
I just want to make sure we're having the proper discussion in the proper place.
Okay. All right, so the motion is to add extending Mr. Johnson's contract for how long?
For one year, retro through October 1st.
So till October 2017.
Right.
October 1st, 2017.
But isn't that discussion?
Not yet, we still have...
Then we have to add it to the agenda, then if it...
We have to add it in the agenda.
Add it to the agenda, okay?
If they add it to the agenda...
That's correct.
Should have a discussion.
That's correct.
So all those in favor of adding it to the agenda?
I'm going to...
Okay. Opposed?
I'm just going to...
It's four votes, so it's on the agenda.
Okay. All right, I'd like to make a motion that we extend the contract of Christian Johnson as Board of Ed Finance Director, retro through October 1st to October 1st of 16 to October 1st of 17.
I second that motion. Now we have discussion.
Now you have discussion.
Go ahead, Dr. Gomez, you're up first.
Okay, yes. I want to move on to deal with the email here because we already had approved one-year contract for Mr. Johnson.
No, we didn't. We never got to that.
We approved that in here, that Mr. Johnson, because of her, okay? And we approved a one-year contract.
No, we did not. No, we've never...
You added to the book. We never brought it up for that. So my point is that we are approving a contract for someone that is not our employee. According to this, he's been reclassified. He's not our employee. According to these letters, I don't know. We have a big problem here.
Well, that can be reclassified again. The point still is that he's a...
But we cannot, we cannot approve, give a contract with someone that has been reclassified to somebody, another entity's employee. He is not our employee according to this. And don't take it personal, please, because this thing, you're taking things personal with Mr. Johnson. I have nothing, nothing against Mr. Johnson. We're talking about procedures here. You're trying to approve a contract from someone who was reclassified as the Town of Wyndham. We cannot do that. He's no longer Town of Board of Education employee.
Mrs. Lambert?
Thank you. Before, he was a Board of Education employee and not a Town Employee because a Town Member, a Town Official never signed his contract. And what happened was, the Board of Education paid his entire salary and the Town allocated money to the Board of Education in lieu of them paying him salary. So he wasn't getting two salaries, he was getting one salary under the guise of the Board of Education and the Town was reimbursing us. Am I correct so far?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
It's true.
So now, the Town is paying his full salary. The intent is that the Board of Education reimburse the Town the sixty percent instead of vice versa.
What is that intention?
May I please finish? If we approve this one-year extension tonight, that would be our intent going forward, that we continue to pay our portion of his salary to the Town. We can make that retroactive, it's in our budget, we have to pay a Finance Manager anyways, Finance Director anyways. We pay the sixty percent that is our portion to the Town. It's equity, the Town is getting their share, we are paying our portion, and then we have at least a contract through October 1st that gives Dr. Garcia the opportunity to meet with the new Town Manager, to work with the new Town Manager and the attorneys over the summer when things are in theory a little bit quieter and she has a little bit more time to do so. I know that the summer is when the bulk of our work gets done, I'm aware of that. But has different time than what she has when we have students in buildings full-time and stuff like that. And that gives her the opportunity to come to a resolution. If on October 1st no resolution has been found, then we have to take a different. But either way, we have to have a Finance Director. And why not the one that has been implementing everything to the best of his ability despite having a million juggling balls in the air? And there have been some mistakes, but I can't say that any one of us has done any of our jobs without mistakes from time to time.
I'm not talking about mistakes, I'm talking about...
I want to know, question here. Can we do this legally? Famously, the Board's only employee, the only employee we have a right to hire or fire is the Superintendent. In other words, can we legally hire someone over the, without the Superintendent's recommendation or approval?
We can direct her. She is our employee.
Yes.
She is our employee, but this is a case of effectively hiring someone other than the Superintendent.
We are just continuing...
And it's not something that we need to do tonight. You're essentially making a decision for a Town Manager who hasn't been appointed yet.
No, it's just giving the time so that they're not sitting in under fire. This should have been done in October of last year. Let's get this done, let me get to the Subcommittee.
It should have been done a long time ago, but what I'm saying is that since you now have a new person coming in, you can let that person decide.
The Town Charter says we have one Finance Director. We had that Finance Director. It was high...
No, no, wait a minute. Wait a minute, we don't have, we don't. The Town in fact has, has...
But we will if we vote tonight.
The Town has made an appointment that is contrary to the language that's in the Charter.
And they wanted to protect Mr. Johnson because they were looking at a situation where he wasn't protected and they did whatever they could because we didn't do our job.
Wait a minute. Why was he not protected?
Because it was looking like Mr. Johnson was going to be released from the Board and they were making sure that Mr. Johnson's job...
What does the language in the Charter say?
That there will be one Finance Director.
No, no, it says something about supervision of the Finance Director.
Under both, the Town Manager and the Superintendent.
Have the right to what?
That is going to change with the Subcommittee if it passes because it should...
No, no, I mean, it's in the Charter. The Subcommittee can't change the Charter. You know the recommendation, but you can't change the Charter.
The Charter, the language of the Charter...
But the problem that we have now is that the Town, the Town is also, the Town is also assuming that they are solely responsible for the supervision and, that's the problem the State has with this situation. And that's the problem that I have with this proposed contract, is that it does not put us in charge of supervising the employee. Yes, ma'am?
Up to this point, Annie Ortiz is the only person who had signed Mr. Johnson's employment contract. No Town Member, Official, Manager, Mayor, Town Council President, no one else signed that contract.
So?
So, up to this point, he has been only an employee of the Board and technically, the Board paid his full salary and the Town reimbursed us. All we're doing right now for a month till October period is reversing those rules. That's all we're doing. It's to stack the votes.
No, no, the Town, the Town there consisted something else, Mrs. Lambert. That is not what we're doing.
She had not finished, let her finish.
I had not finished.
But that's a false statement.
If I had finished my explanation, it might have explained what my statement was. But I was interrupted rudely by two gentlemen of this Board.
Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. I did not, I raised my hand and quietly waited for both of you to be done.
Okay.
I expect the same courtesy. Up to this point, the Town, we have paid his entire salary and held his contract and the Town has given him, given the Board his share.
Okay.
We are doing exactly the opposite now. The Town had no say before in his contract because we held his contract. And it worked out. We're not asking for this to be, I am not asking for this in this motion that Mr. French made and I seconded, this to be an indefinite contract. It's not to go on in perpetuity exactly like this. We are asking that until October, giving all parties involved, including the new party coming in, the opportunity to work together. We have a Finance Director, who I believe is competent, but that is my personal belief, work with Dr. Garcia, work with the new Town Manager, work with the Town Council. If we need to get a Charter revision on this, we'll get a Charter revision going on this. It's been four years, we can do one next year. But we need to get this done and we need to have someone in place to make it work. Saying there's someone else in place is therefore splitting our Finance Department again. It is counterproductive to what the Charter has us doing, it's counterproductive to moving it forward, it's counterproductive to us getting along with the Town. Thank you.
Okay. So the error in that analysis is, there's an MOU that went along with that contract that provided that the Director of Finance would be supervised equally by the Town Manager and the Superintendent of Schools. All right? The Town has assumed a hundred percent responsibility for the supervision of the, of their Director of Finance. That's the problem with renewing this contract, is that you're extending a contract to someone that the Superintendent is not permitted to supervise. And I'm not so sure the State will buy that as a Business Manager. I don't know, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer on this one, but, but the fact that the Superintendent does not have supervisory responsibility for the Business Manager of the Board of Education is a sticking point.
Is the MOU in effect for the duration of the contract?
For the duration of the contract, which expired in October of this year.
The MOU is no longer relevant here. The Charter says that they are both to supervise it. That has not happened. I understand that.
Yes.
We have to get along and we have to have a Finance Director, a unified Finance Director according to the Charter. Therefore, just let me finish, Dr. Gomez, and I'll hand the floor over to you if it's okay with Dr. Sewell. Therefore, let's make it work, people. End of discussion. It's a June, July, August, October, October, five-month, not even a full five-month, a four-and-a-half-month extension of a contract, retroactively. Thank you.
Okay. We're talking about let's make it work, but apparently all the things that I hear, I see, and I read, it just doesn't help, okay? And I'd like you to explain what is reclassifying means? Because that means that he moves from Board of Education to Town of Wyndham employee, then where is accountability to the Board of Education? Where is it? Okay? And you as a business person, you only say that. You will never take anybody, a Business Manager, who is not accountable to you, would you? So I never come here, I'm finished, whoever is Business Manager has to be accountable to us or to the Superintendent. And the way this email reads from the Director of Human Resources, it just doesn't say that. It says that he is reclassified from Board of Education to Town of Wyndham, period. So what's going on there?
Okay, so as far as I see it, it's on the financial side, he's being paid through the Town, he is still responsible for sixty percent of what's going on at the Board of Education. So at this point, I'm asking for a point of order, let's make a vote on this.
That's different from a point of order. You're asking to call the question.
Call the question, I'm sorry.
This is yours.
Okay. So is anyone else? We can either have a vote on the question or we can decide that if no one else has anything else to say, we could go ahead and vote.
I have a question before that. If the Town of Wyndham approved this already, or this is just...
The Town wouldn't approve what?
Or this approved what they say he had reclassified financially?
Mr. Johnson has a contract with the Town.
The Town, the Town acted in rationally. They wouldn't consult with us, they just did what they did. They did the same thing with the Town.
We can do the same to them.
Correct.
Okay? If they do it to us, we do it to them.
What are we doing to them?
If they didn't come with us to make the decision, we can make a decision without coming with them and then work from there.
That seems adversarial, but I understand where you're coming from with it.
Okay. Okay. Well, since actually called the question, so unless we want to have a vote on calling the question, we need a vote. Okay? So the motion is to extend Mr. Johnson's contract from the sixteen, from October 2016 to October 2017.
Correct.